We call the meeting to our at 7 o'clock. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredited, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
To make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Could I suggest with the deletions that the town manager has--
Well, some--
Discussion.
I'll second it.
A second. Good enough. Okay.
So my, I'm made aware, Mr. Chairman, do we have to strike the Steso Road scoping study, the CEDRAC bylaws, and the personnel policy items on this agenda?
Correct.
So I will amend my own motion to include those three items. Or the exclusion of those three items.
Okay, is there any questions?
What was the, what was the first one you said, Dick?
The first one was the Steso Road scoping study.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next item is approval of minutes. We have two sets, July 11th and July 20th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 11th, 2022, as presented.
Second?
A second. Discussion.
Got some changes.
Sure.
On the first page, way to the bottom, under citizen comments, Schroeder is spelt wrong. Her name is S.C.H.R.O.E.D.E.R. In the next, the last paragraph, I think we should have Sean Seguin added. The second paragraph on page two, again, Schroeder appears twice. And down further where his under CEDRAC, J. Mark and M. L. Harris are confused by the two documents. You have to put R. in there. It's okay. Okay, the, at the bottom of page three, under the sailing program, it was stated that, and it isn't in here, the town could pick up this boat, the sunfish, at the same time they pick up the equipment in New Hampshire to be repaired all at the same time. And that's what I add.
That's it. Dick?
I'm good now.
Joe?
Last line of the first page is just jumping into kudos to Mr. Combs. I would suggest we say he offered his kudos, and that's one D, to Mr. Combs. On page two, third line, discussing Robert Prostin's appearance before the board, but has been met with opposition and told, I would insert, he has not, instead of not, no control over the lake.
Sorry, Joe, what line was that?
That's the third line of the top paragraph. It should end with, he was met with opposition and told he has no control over the lake. In the first line of that same paragraph, the word bet should be replaced with best. Moving down that page, two-thirds of the way, under the CEDRAC proposed changes, I would suggest we say Jay Lamy confirmed that the board had received the proposed changes. And in the final paragraph, under employee appreciation compensation, the beginning of that paragraph says, R. Combs asked if he should recuse himself as wife is full-time employee. Yes, we should add he at that point. Yes, he should and did at this time. The final line has a statement attributed to me, and I honestly don't know what I said in this context. It says, J. Mark stated he felt they should maybe address the thresholds as he feels some that should be compensated or not. Mike, do you remember what I said in that context? Maybe I used the word thresholds.
I, I, I don't recall. If you use the word thresholds or not. I remember you talking about certain parties may, should, possibly shouldn't be compensated. And you did talk about the top monetary amounts. Maybe that's where the thresholds came from. I'd have to go back and listen to the tape to--
Well, I think, I don't think it distorts the point I was making at that point, so let's leave it as it is. On the third page, under the sailing program, first line, J. Mark, instead of have collected, I think that should say has collected, sunfish is not sun, space fish, but capital S.U.N.F.I.S.H. And in the bold area down below in that same paragraph, sunfish again should be capitalized. And that is it.
Anything else on this? All those in favor of accepting the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, I raised my hand, you didn't see me, but the word, on the first page at the bottom, it says Sean, and it was recommended to add Seguin in there. It's S.E.G.U.I.N., but his name is S.E.A.N., not S.H.A.W.N.
Guess we can handle that. Moving on to the next set of minutes. July 20th, the meeting was held. Is there a motion of this?
I'd make a motion that we table approval of these minutes to the next meeting since they were just presented to us at this point.
Second?
Second.
A second. Discussion being done. All those in favor of tabling to the next meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Citizen comments and/or concerns not on the agenda? Yes, your number one.
Mary Drogi, Castleton, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, my understanding is that the board voted to sell Castleton Village School. So in light of that decision at the last select board meeting, my question is, will the town reserve for town ownership all the public land west of the Castleton Village School, including but not limited to the driveway, the parking area, the basketball court, the sliding pint, and the tee ball field that has for decades been available for public use, will that be maintained in town ownership and not included in the sale?
I don't believe we have a specific proposal as yet as to the building and what land would be included.
Okay, my, I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm not representing any group. There's no reason why these lands that have been open to the public for generations should be sold to a private entity.
Are you referring to the building and everything?
No, I'm talking about the land, all the land west.
Just the land?
I just think it's an important point to make.
All right. Joe?
I, just a comment on that. I just want to remind everyone that decisions like this have to be made both by the Castleton-Huberton select boards. We could not make that decision on our own.
I understand. I'm coming to you as a Castleton resident to the Castleton Board.
Okay. That it, Mary?
Um, I do, well--
I probably shouldn't have asked that question.
Yeah, probably not. I do have a couple more questions. That was my primary concern. Well, I know in the past, when we sold the firehouse, when you sold the land, well, listed the town, like the land on Sand Hill Road, the property was visible on the town website as town land for sale. Is your intention to have it posted on the town website, posted through a licensed real estate broker so that we can get the best price possible for this building? If you decide--
Won't be able to answer that.
I can answer it by statute. We have to post it, and it has to be in like a paper, the town's website, and local, we put it in the post offices now. So it has to be legally warned or convey property.
Has to be on the town website. Okay, I was told it was just had to be at the post offices.
Well, our recommendation from our attorney was every place that we post warnings and stuff now, we should post it.
But are you going to also list it with a real estate broker?
That's the question for the select board.
So that's a question I have. And will you get an updated real estate appraisal given the hot real estate market we're in?
That I can answer. We've signed a contract to do so with the sergeant appraisals. They did the last one. So that was signed, and they will, we'll have an updated--
So it'll be updated. And so it will be the value of that building, knowing that the roof needs to be repaired throughout. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, this is Aton. Do you want to just bring up the issue, or you want me to bring it up?
Just a second, Aton, see if anyone else here wishes to speak, and then we'll get right to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else who wishes to address the board, item's not on the agenda? Okay, your turn, Aton.
So this is something that I think Mike can present very well also. We have a problem with the culvert of Little Rutland Road that goes to our property. It has sinkholes that have already caused damage and make it dangerous, basically, for us or for any visitors. And we have been going through this for almost two years, I think, Mike, and I think we should probably find a solution.
Okay, thank you, Aton. Mike, can you respond to that?
I can. So I did put a lot of detailed notes in the, my report to the board references, and it's probably been over two years because it goes back to a legal opinion from Lois Baldwin to the town before I even got here. So that was four and a half years ago. We found deeds that basically said that town's responsible to fix any damage done to Mr. and Mrs. Kilchewski's property on Little Rutland Road. We've kicked the can down the road for quite a while. We actually put it out to bid, and this, well, I'll digress for a minute. When it, we had a storm in April of 2019 that did about a storm, did a lot of storm damage townwide, and this was included in that part of that damage. And so FEMA accepted it. They gave us an amount of money, which was $14,886, I think, if I remember correctly. When the bids came in, when I had contractors up there, it was over, going to be over $100,000 to get the work done because of the access to the property, the two retaining walls, et cetera, trees that they, they all cited in their, when we were talking on site. So we tried to, we had dealing with, well, you, actually, Aton, I think you were dealing with a local engineering firm, and they did make a proposal to the town. They wanted to put a drop inlets in the road, and I rejected all of it because it was going to become problematic for the town at that point. So we're at this, we kicked the can down the road. We're at a point where Brent's looked at it. We've got to fix it. It's just finding a way to do it that's the least amount, least intrusive to the private property, because this runs through private property. But it was, the town put the culvert in. It was to get, catch water that comes off from Hempstead Circle. It comes, it flows downhill and has to go underneath Little Rutland Road because there's nothing, the ditches can't absorb it. It's just too much water. So it runs underneath Little Rutland Road, underneath the culvert, underneath Kilchewski's retaining wall, and runs out and empties into the lake. It's about 150 feet. So we're at this point where we changed the culvert under the road a couple of years ago because it was forming a sinkhole there, and the culvert was rotted. And now we're at a point where how do we get from where we just, we terminated that work underneath their retaining wall and down to the lake in the least intrusive and least costly manner? And so Brent and I went up there, Ed Savage and I have been up there, Chris Foraker and I have been up there, and we still haven't come to any kind of resolution. In the meantime, it's Kilchewski's property that's being damaged. We did fix a sinkhole. I think that was, were you here, Brent, when that happened? They filled in one of the sinkholes, but it still needs to be worked on. So I don't, we're trying to figure a way through this, and we talked about sliplining the culvert. We've talked about that spray-on foam, and it hardens with ultraviolet light. We're at, it's just, it's cost at this point, too. We haven't found anything that's in the realm of $14,000, but we've got to find a way to fix this because the bad news just isn't getting better with time.
Okay. Is that your update, Anton?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the only thing I'm, oh, is the, you know, I told Mike, we have been very cooperative in that regard. We said if it means disturbing our summer and doing the work, that's fine. I mean, you know, it has to be done. We know that we also, there is some issue with gas tanks that have to be moved, and we said that we were going to assume the cost of moving the gas tanks and putting them back in. So we were ready to go towards the town and make it a little easier. We have to remember that those sinkholes do pose potential injury to people. God forbid something happens. It is going to change the whole, the whole picture here. So this is why I think we've been, patient Mike has been very cooperative. We have been dealing with it for two-plus years, and I think it's time for the town to make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Anton. Questions, Joe?
Yes, I had a question, Mike, regarding the deed that you referenced. What, what, what does that say, and what does it pertain to?
In particular, it talks about the culvert and repairing damage to the property owner, if there was damage to their property of repairing that. What it doesn't say specifically, and that's what the attorney said, was it didn't say anything about replacing it. But, so if you want, if we, if we want to mince words, I guess, our culvert policy says if we put it in, we replace it. So we put, the town put it in. It wasn't the Kilchewskis or the previous owners that put the culvert in, it was the town. They have an easement through that property to do so. So even though it doesn't specifically say that we'll replace the culvert, it's kind of implied because our culvert policy says that if we put it in, we replace it. Or if it was put in to our standards, we take it over. In this case, the town did the work. So we're kind of, it's kind of mincing words a little bit, but I did talk, Brent, we talked about the part that goes underneath the retaining wall. That's the, that's really the crux of this. The rest of it's easy. To dig up a piece of culvert along the flat part of this property is the easy part. Fixing the part that goes underneath that retaining wall is the difficult part because it's, there's not much to connect to. We ran a camera through it and looked at it. It's rotted, so there's nothing to connect to. So if we don't put something new in there to connect to, all that water that's discharged from the, from our right-of-way into that culvert is going to wash it out. And we're going to have, we're going to invest a lot of money and have major problems still with it washing out. And there's also, there's also a concern where there's a well, the well is at, where the parking area is, at the top of the retaining wall, and there's, we have to work around that, make sure we don't damage the well casing or anything else. And then there's a cesspool at the bottom of the, the retaining wall that we don't want to damage or be responsible for if we move equipment in there and cause problems to their cesspool. Because there is a point in time where Aton and Lori were going to replace their septic system years ago, over four years ago. So I think they still want to do that, but we don't want to damage their existing cesspool because that's what they have. So it's, it's kind of, you know, it's touchy to figure out how to do this without, you know, causing more damage or getting underneath that retaining wall.
Joe?
Just to follow up, Mike, when did the town put this culvert in?
Oh, God.
1970.
And are some of the modifications you're talking about, the retaining wall, the well, the tanks underground, are those, were those in place at the time that the culvert was installed, or have those been added since?
Can you answer that, Anton?
Yeah, everything was there. I mean, you know, the cesspool, the house was built, the cesspool was put there like 90, also like 1970 or 1975, around the same time. None of the, no matter what was done in the property, none of these things caused damage to the culvert. We have to be realistic. This is something that is made of metal. People don't do it anymore today. Today, they use other materials which will last probably forever, and it's just time. It's not because there is a retaining wall, or there is a well, or there is a cesspool. The whole length of the culvert is rotten. It is metal that has water in it and has contact, constant contact with water, and it just rotten, lasted and rotten. I mean, you know, regardless of anything else in the property.
I think Joe's question was, when was the well drilled?
I don't have the exact date. My gut feeling, probably around 1990, maybe, or actually, before that, the house was built in 19, the first house on the property was actually one of the original cabins, so the, the well was built maybe even 1950. I don't even know when. When the house itself was built, I don't have the date, but it's an old well.
Well, the state has records dating back to 1965 on wells that are drilled. I think Joe's question was, has changes been, have changes been made since the culvert was put in?
No, no changes to the best of our knowledge. No changes were made.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we have your concerns, Anton, and town manager, keep trying to move on, move forward.
One more brief comment if, and again, one thing is to replace the culvert. The other thing, I don't know if there is another location to move it to, and if this is what it takes, it may make things much easier.
Well, Brent and I talked about this. Brent went and looked at it, and we have to discharge it underneath the road to get it down to the lake. We, there's not enough area for that to infiltrate the ground on the, on the hill where it comes down from the Hempstead Circle. It hits the road. There's no place for the water to go. It's either going to wash the road out or overwhelm the ditches and stuff. So there really isn't a way to not use a culvert. And if we put it somewhere else, we need to get easements through someone else's property because that is like--
Correct.
House, it's jammed into houses up there.
Isn't that the low point where water comes from the north and comes from the south?
It is.
It is the low point. Water usually goes to the low point.
So it's just figuring out, the biggest thing is underneath that.
Yeah, sure.
That's what we got to figure out. Brent and I talked about where these companies are that do this spraying foam, if we can do that, but you still have to have something to hook at the end to connect the new culvert to, and that's the problem. It's all routed.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I, I think as long as I've been on the board, this has been a concern, and I think Mr. Kilchewski is being more than patient with us. So I would like to ask the town manager to come back to the board with a recommendation on this. I don't know what a reasonable timeframe is, but something in the neighborhood of two to three months seems appropriate to me.
Okay. Want to make a motion to that effect, or do you feel that's enough?
I think that's probably, if, unless there's a disagreement on that point, it may not be necessary to have a motion.
Any disagreement on Joe's suggestion? Okay, I guess that, I guess that takes care of it. Moving on, any other citizens' concerns? Item's not on the agenda. Have anything else on Zoom, Mike?
Anybody, we got Zach Hale on Zoom and Melanie Combs. That's besides Allison and Aton.
That's it? Okay, then if not, we will move on. The Steso Road scoping study is--
It's off.
Yeah, is off the, and we'll move on to Chief Peter.
All right. Good evening, board.
Good evening, Peter.
Couple things, you'll look at the June monthly report, Justin together for us. As you can see, the numbers, you know, were pretty consistent, June, you know, beginning of summer. Couple things increased, really not a lot of changes, although we had 100 more calls. Thieves were down, actually, from 15 to three. That was actually amazing in June.
Excuse me, excuse me, chief, I have--
Recording in progress.
Beginning.
Somebody start over?
No, I'm doing the whole thing.
You're okay.
Okay, so any questions on the total calls at all? If not, rest. We had 12 last month, a couple down from 14 in May. Nothing really stands out. We've been busier on the weekends in the summer, especially in the weekends. DUIs have increased. We'll see it in this month, we'll see it in July. I think Justin's got like two, like every weekend, and July. Tickets down a little bit in June. Nothing really changed. As you can see, we do have, as in notes in back, we do have all the three speed cards out. We got one over on, you know, people have requested it on Johnson Spooner. We got one down Route 30, just by the garage. We get complaints, people approaching at intersection. And we have one still on the Creek Road. We've run that, it's our second year we've run that because of the summer, the traffic is quite a lot. Calls of service, a little doing, universities close, we had like one. And backup, we do provide more backup this month, as you can see the numbers there. More, we get nine at Fairhaven in June. As you see, any questions on those charts?
Joe?
I think in a previous meeting, you explained why it's no longer possible for you to provide the information on the backup that we get from other departments.
Can you remind me what it is? Because we switched from the spillman cat system to Velcor, which we can't look for people providing backup to us. It's just that particular program, you won't do that for us. That's all, that's why.
Your sense is that that's essentially--
Yeah, I, we, yeah, I mean, that's, I don't think you're going to see any changes really in the numbers in the past. You know, Fairhaven does back us up if we need it, or DSP, depending on what it is, but we try to run two options on the weekends anyway, so we kind of handle it ourselves. And if you look on the page in the notes, you can see the call service already mentioned. The thefts were down. We continue to do our property checks. In the summertime, we don't get as many because even though they went up, more people are sticking around for summers, which I truly understand why. We thought we do, we're doing more foot patrols at night, especially in the summertime. Probably probably a little bit reduced some of the thefts from the cars being left unlocked and such. Talked about the speed cards. Justin did put in on for highway safety grant, which we always do for the, for every year for the in-car camera system and the handle, handle radar. I do have to update on my cruiser that was supposed to have been ordered in February. Found out it wasn't ordered at all, so I contacted, it's not a snap for my part, it was a snap for his part. He ordered it in July, a week ago, so I can't tell you how long that's going to be. I was not very happy, but there's not much I can do at that point. So, any questions on that? I do have one thing I need the chairman to sign. This is the, the new contract for our SRO. Next year, we're only doing four hours a day, and we're obviously only covering Orwell Benson and the elementary school because CBS is closed. So if y'all want to look it over and see what it is-- it over, see what it is, and then I just need that tonight. Do you sign that? Super Tenet's already signed it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. While, while we're looking at that and there's, we're ahead of schedule, it might be prudent to have the chief give you an update on dispatching, because
Yes, that's a good point.
It's a, it's gonna be a cost to us in the future and you might wanna hear kind of what's going on while we're passing that around.
So one of the biggest things with whole dispatching has been going on for a year. We know the DPS wants to get out of free dispatching to the municipalities covering fire, EMS, and police. So in Rutland County, we do have our own working group with the agencies involved that do not, that are not gonna have dispatching. So the state legislature, they passed the grant for 11 million, but they're only, they're gonna hold four and a half million. So they're gonna put out six and a half million among the PSAPs that need, that nobody's supposed to cover is not a building.
What's a PSAP, Chief? They may not know what that is.
It's basically a dispatch center. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking acronyms. It's gonna cover the equipment, such as the consoles, any other equipment. It won't recover like a, a new building. It'd have to be an existing building would, would cover for the equipment. And a one year of, of maintaining that for the budget. And after that year, we have to come up with a way, this consortium of municipalities that are doing this, a way to pay for it. So right now, we have one agency that's looking into doing, that's Rutland County Sheriff's Department. Rutland City, there's one apartment. So we're looking at that possibility of either paying and sustaining it through a county tax or do a contractual rate per call volume per agency, which would be pretty high for us, which would be probably like $100,000 a year. So those are things that we're looking into. The working group that the state put together is supposed to give us guidelines on that. The problem is we have six weeks to come up with a plan when we apply for, I say we, the group applies for that grant to get part of that six and a half million. That'll be the easy part. The sustainability will be the difficult part of how we do that. So that's where that stands.
Questions?
Yeah, I don't know if this is for the chief or for the town manager, but in the town manager's report in item seven, it says the dispatching services could have close to a $2 million price tag. Now, that would be county, right? Or would that be-
That would be for the county, correct. Okay, we're anywhere from, anywhere from two to three in between here, depending on you're talking, it's gotta cover the salary, the benefits, all those kind of things.
Anything else there?
No, I'm not yet.
Okay, Joe?
So DPS, Department of Public Service, has been providing the dispatching services.
Correct.
Presumably, they, they've been getting legislature's appropriation support to do that.
Correct.
They've decided to dispense with that. How does the legislature feel about them doing that if they've already been funded to do that in the past?
Well, they're not looking to cut their budget or lay off people, but that, you know, they're just looking to only take care of state agencies, which would be DLC, the game wardens, BSP, what's the name of this? Who, yeah, Department of the, so they, they would only, they would only cover those state agencies for dispatching.
But, but given that they have been supported financially to do this in the past, this ends up being an unfunded mandate placed on the local communities.
Kind of. Rutland County is, we've always been behind, I say we, behind the eight ball when it comes to dispatching. There are other PSAPs out there like Hartford, St. Aldens, that contract out, or there are other agencies pay services for them. That's been going on for a while. Now, there are agencies such as Woodstock where it came from, they have their own dispatch, Middlebury, and then you have Manchester. So there are agencies that do have that, but I think that would be, that'd be really expensive for somebody wanting to, for this size agency. We want to be able to regionalize it where you disperse the costs of 30 agencies. There's 37 agencies that, that, that have dispatch services in this county. Seven of them are, you gotta rule out, because what's ironic is there's a number of EMS and fire agencies along this border that pay Washington County for their services. Yeah, that's kind of bizarre without getting New York State residents paying for their services over here. I don't know if they know that. So that's where we're at. It's a, it's a huge issue. So they want to have everything in place before July 2024. Now, we got, we have to have, we have to have a plan done and figure out what the costs are and then come up with a sustainability part of that plan by next year for sure, after January. There's no question. We're gonna come up with something now, but we've got, we got a little numbers around. Now, I don't know what the county tax is in Rutland County. I don't know what the town's paid. That's something that's the legislators, we're trying to get some legislators in our next meeting. That's where we're at.
Anything else on this? Mary Lee?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it.
I have that form. Sign it.
Yeah, we need a motion here, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wanna make a motion regarding law enforcement contract, town of Castleton and the Slate Valley Union School District?
I would move that we authorize the chairman to sign the agreement related to providing school resource officer support for our local schools.
Second? Second, Dick?
There's a second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there a monetary value to that, that the town's received?
There is. Yes, there is.
I would make sure that's included in there.
Do we know it tonight?
$55,902.
Oh, I would add that to my motion.
Add it to the motion. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. You want this, huh, Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the Granger House Project. Matt Moriarty, Moriarty and Kerry Savage. I believe you're Matt.
I am, Goodwin Wood.
Okay.
Matt Moriarty, Director of Grants at Castleton.
And Kerry Savage, Director of Development and Development.
So we wanted to come in and give a little bit of an update on what we're doing with the Granger House project. As you know, probably a couple of years ago, I guess it's almost three years at this point, we started a renovation project on the house. The Granger House everyone aware of, it's the house on South Street, opposite the campus center, a beautiful 19th century home. We started a renovation project there three years ago and we are in the process of working on right now a large grant from the National Domestical Humanities to continue work on this house, primarily doing an investigation around the house, but also converting it to a museum. The long-term goal of the house is to convert it to a museum focusing on Castleton history, local history. We want it to be a venue for local school, school groups. We want it to be something that community members will be proud of. This'll be a very interactive museum, lots of digital exhibits. We're using 3D virtual reality, you know, as well as, as much as I think is more traditional museum approaches. So we think that it'll probably have some, some benefits in terms of bringing people into Castleton to visit over the course of its life. And I think in broader perspective, one of the things that I think will be neat is that we're also sort of the second part of what it will be is we're calling it a learning lab. The goal is to train our students in preparing things like digital exhibits, museum exhibits, doing historic preservation, digitizing local documents. Again, with the idea being that we focus on local history, that we want students engaged on the ground in the community of Castleton, so that, so the Granger House becomes not just a sort of focusing on Granger House and the family who live there, but in, in larger perspective on the town as a whole. You know, looking at its history from, you know, the earliest Native Americans to the contact period, colonial period, up to the present day. You know, so we've, we've done quite a bit of work on that. We are in the process of getting ready for a major fundraising campaign in order to sort of take us over the top. The main house is in very good shape. The L, if you've ever taken a look at it, is in very tough shape. We're about to get an estimate on renovating. We want to save the L. We actually originally went through the process of looking at tearing it down and then replacing it with something else. But now I think what we're gonna do is we're probably going to try to save it, because it's actually quite historical. We know quite a bit more now than we knew just, just a few months ago about sort of its importance in respect to the house. And one of the things that, drunk, any time you want, is that as part of our fundraising campaign, it would be very, very helpful if we had some sort of statement of very clear support from the town of Castleton. You know, I'm not sure if we request that from, from you or at various levels, just indicating to the people that requesting funds from them, we have strong support from the community. We'll be looking at sort of traditional humanities fundraising. We'll be looking at alumni fundraising, but we'll also be looking at sources that would be in the realm of economic development, because we think, and we've actually received some, some very positive feedback on that front, that this is a direction that, that we would get some support from. And the, so if there is a way for the board to provide an indication of support for this project, we'd greatly appreciate it. If there is a method at some point for us to request very modest funding support, financial support, to sort of demonstrate this commitment, that would also be something we would pursue.
And buying from the community also helps with other grants and things that we would be able to get, because they'll have to make it real to accessible and handicap compliant. And so it's quite a bit of work to do.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of pieces in terms of, you know, access to it, accessibility, EDA bathrooms. There's a sort of a whole host of things that we, I'm sure haven't thought of yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary Lee?
Is there an interaction with the Historical Society?
We have, we have spoken quite a bit, for example, with Holly about this project from the Historical Society. And we intend to be, you know, working very closely with the Historical Society. Holly, I talked to her, she's talking, you know, she has said that a bunch of times, quite a bit about this project.
Thank you.
Kerry, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Boy, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay. Joe?
Just a, a couple of quick comments. First, I would urge any of you who can to take advantage of any opportunities that are provided. I toured the facility and was given a demonstration of some of the very impressive technology that is being used related to 3D scanners, 3D printers, ground penetrating radar, et cetera. It's really quite, quite amazing. And I think you'd all enjoy and certainly young people would be made excited about this. For myself, as a select board member, I, I would welcome kind of draft text from you as to what type of letter of support would be appreciated and helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I also failed to mention that we, we are hosting an event on Colonial Day, probably from 9 to noon or somewhere along those lines. It should be announced in the next few days. Where we'll have an open house inside the house. We'll be showing off a lot of the research we've done on the house. We've learned through this grant an amazing amount about the residents of this house and sort of how this particular neighborhood grew over time, as well as finding also some interesting stuff in the backyard and around, actually inside the house as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just one last comment. You're, you're privileged to have Mary McIntyre, who chairs our CEDRAC group. And I would think that that's a group that can also weigh in on, on the benefits of this program for the town.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, both of you. Mike?
I just, I wanna ask Matt if there's a, is there a timeline that you need this by?
Not yet, but you know, there will be something in the next, we'll probably have a better sense of the deadline probably within a couple of weeks.
Right. Okay, anything else for now to Kerry? Thank you very much, both of you. We appreciate it. Moving on, the quote for the winter sand screen. Brett?
Present.
There's a, there's an add to your packets, okay. Just make sure you get-
Is that timing here again? We're gonna start taking up winter sand. And given the craziness of what's going on, I've been batting around with Mike for a while. We've decided to take a different approach. We got all these roads that we're lowering to pave. All that material we trucked to our pit, that's years of winter sand that we put down. And the idea occurred to me, why not rent a screen, fracture the price, screen it out and recycle it. We budgeted $64,000 for winter sand. We came to that number at $16 a yard for 4,000 yards. Last year, we came $1750. This year, the prices we're getting, we're looking at, you know, $24 delivered. So it's, it seems like a no-brainer to me for that. We're gonna save $22,000 right off the top. The downfall is most of it's like baby powder. It doesn't have any stone in it. So you see a price in there, stone price, and that's where the stone comes in. You gotta add something to it so it can grip a little bit.
Questions for Brett? Joe?
Brett, the, I assume there's labor associated with doing this.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be running the screen ourselves. Glad we heard. I asked them for a call for two weeks, but I've done the math on what the screen's supposed to take a day. So it's actually gonna be less money, because we can do it in a week. We're gonna put Mike on the file with the excavator feeding it, and we can haul away to the lower in a week's time, we'll have our sand blow up.
And we can absorb that additional labor for the crew?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else for the questions, Brett? If not, is there a motion?
So we, just for clarity, we need two motions, one for the gravel, or one for the stone and one for the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
And your recommendation, this is either for Mike or for Brett, is to go with Martels? Or what's your recommendation, Brett?
For the stone, no, my recommendation is, it's $1,600 more, $1,620 more. My recommendation would be to go with Casellas. But because of the shortage of manpower and so forth, I can't rent a screen and then be waiting for trucks to bring me stone. Casellas is not gonna be contracted. They're trucking out. They've been doing it themselves with tractor trailers. So once I start hauling, I know I have the file there and I'm not waiting for it. And that's, you know, we're renting equipment to do the job. I gotta know that I have everything there I need to do the job. And that's what I'm worried about. You know, Stan told me he was trying to find trucks and he got us prices, but I'm worried about the uncertainty of whether the trucks are gonna show up. Casellas is pretty much, we tell them tomorrow, I tell them that we, we're buying the stone, they're gonna start sending trucks and stockpile it in the pit.
Either scenario, we're roughly 20,000 under budget, right?
Yeah, we're-
Okay.
We're 21,480 under budget.
Yeah, like I said, in either scenario, we're still saving money. So I'll make a motion.
Mary Lee, what, you have anything first?
No, that's fine.
Okay, Dick, go ahead.
All right, my first motion will be to authorize the town manager to contract with Casella for crush stone for the winter sand project at a price of $37,620. Now, can I put in there the caveat, that's an estimate?
Sure.
An estimated cost of $37,620.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
My second motion will be to authorize the town manager to rent a 2019 77C screen machine for up to two weeks for an estimated cost of $7,800.
Your second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, bid award, Off-Road Diesel.
This is the next fun one.
Yes.
During the autumn party, I knew nobody was gonna give us a set price. I'm trying to get an idea of, of our center pool for the rest of the summer and then roughly what we use for the winter. what we use for the winter. I set out trying to get, you know, if they could give me a price over rack or what they're going to charge. One told me flat out they weren't going to do it, and then the other two gave us a price. But that still doesn't give us a set number to work with because tomorrow that, you know, the price is still going to change, the volatility in the market. So we know it will be at 14 cents over rack, but we don't know what that, that set price is going to be. I do know the day I called Sam's with $4.15 a gallon when they delivered, and Champlain was $4.76. And Champlain was who we were getting through, and they were the ones who told me they would not give us a set price.
Where does Sam's buy their fuel?
Sam's gets their fuel from Champlain, so it's the exact same fuel that got delivered to us, and we saved 60 cents a gallon, so for me, it was kind of no brainer. Local fuel did give us a surprise. They were 15 cents over rack. So Sam's is 14 over rack, local's at 15. My recommendation would be, I know I'm going to need roughly $2,300 more gallons to get me to end of October, November, and then probably 8,000 gallons of winter blend during the winter. And that all depends on how big I got.
How much can you store, Brett?
I can store 8,000 gallons.
And the price has been trending downward at this point?
It is. Like I said, we paid $4.15 the other day, so my thought was, while the price is down, because tomorrow we could be back up to $5.50 a gallon, we ought to call, order a couple thousand gallons from Sam's and put in the tank, and we know we're good until we restock over November.
But we need the fuel no matter what. We can't do business without it, so.
That's the cheapest price I could find.
Any other questions for a motion?
So your recommendation is to go with Sam's?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Trying to figure out how to word it. You take a stab at it, Joe?
Sure.
I would move that we accept the bid we've received from Sam's USave Fuels for $2,300 of, $2,300 gallons of summer blend and 8,000 gallons of winter blend off-road at the, at a price which will be 14 cents a gallon over the so-called rack price on the day of delivery.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. All those, motion passes, one, two, three, four. One abstention.
Who seconded?
I did.
Thank you.
I abstained.
Now we're down to winter sand?
Heating fuel?
I'm, fuel.
Fuel.
Heating fuel.
That's what I said, that's something in my hand, right?
No, you've got calcium.
Oh, yeah. You ready for that? You want to do the heating fuel first?
Either way?
I don't have anything on heat and fuel. I'll have somebody else.
Where's the one on calcium? Do you want to do the calcium then?
Sure. So that's another crazy one to get prices for, like everything else. I reached out to Techland, they didn't get back to us. Allstate, the two we've got in from the past, and then Safe Road Industries out of Massachusetts, somebody else that we've got it from in the past. You see the prices, Safe Roads, $1.42 a gallon, and then Allstate's $1.15 a gallon. Wait, let's see my notes. If you got my notes, Mike, give you. The difference between the two is the calcium chloride that we buy from Allstate is only, it's a 27% concentration. Concentration, yeah, but you know what I'm saying. So we can't add water to it. We've got to spray that straight on the road. The stuff that comes from Safe Road Industries is 36%, which means we can mix that with up to 25% water when it comes, then spray it on the road. So when you do the math on that, it comes up cheaper to go with that. The other big difference, and the reason why I kind of wanted to get this to funny is that product is non-corrosive. Where the calcium meets up our pumps, meets up the trucks, this is the byproduct of the steel and alcohol, and the byproduct of processing paper, making paper and paper. So it's, they call it nature's glue. It doesn't drop metal out. It's not harmful to the environment. The only thing that you get with it is when you first spray it on the road, it has a foul smell, is what they say, it has a weird smell, and then that goes away.
That's the product from Safe Road?
That's the product from Safe Road, and you'll see the picture in their brochure if you have it, pass it in use to use it. When Sandville was a dirt road, they reclaimed that road, and that's the product to use with our, picture of our road is actually on their brochure, it's our product. Joe, I have mine.
Mike?
I guess what I wanted to hear is, is this product something he's going to use on winter salt?
Yes. So my idea behind this, last year we cut back on salt, I think roughly $16,000. Rollin City, a few years ago, they went to pre-mix in their salt with this product. And they, they normally use 4,000 tons of salt a year. They've cut back to 3,000 tons by mixing it. The idea is it pre-wets the salt, and then when the salt hits the road, the salt's heavier, so the cars don't blow it off, and it doesn't, you know, normally when it comes off our spinner, you'll see the salt bounce, no matter how slow it goes, ends up in the ditch. You'll always have that loss. With this, it hits the road, it stays, it lasts longer, which means less application. The other plus side to it is when it gets really cold, starts getting under 15 degrees, you see all the salt trucks putting down more salt because the salt doesn't react and work like it should. This, because of the chemicals in it, it makes the salt work to a lower temperature, the calcium in it basically, makes the salt work to a lower temperature, so we don't have to put down a heavier amount. The idea, they're telling me that we can cut our salt usage by 30 to 50%. I'm being more optimistic. You see my notes, I would be happy if we could go from using 1,000 tons to 750 tons of salt. It's a, it's a big cost saver. Even with buying this product, we're still going to save 13, another $13,000 on top of what we saved last year. So ideally, we'll save $35,000 on our salt for the year. That's a pretty big number. We put that on top of what we save on winter sand by spraying our own, now we've saved $55,000 for the winter. So that's kind of where my mind's going with this. I think it makes sense all the way around. What I would like to do is we budget $12,000 for dust control, which is not nearly enough, but if we buy 4,000 gallons of this stuff for, out of our dust control budget, then I would like to buy another 4,000 gallons out of our salt budget. Again, it's 40, 4700 bucks or whatever. The idea, because that's what we're going to use that other 4,000 gallons for, we should be able to mix all of our salt for the whole winter in 4,200 gallons of this. They're saying six gallons of this product for every ton of salt. I've already moved, any of you who've been up by the salt shed, I've already moved the tank up there, the one we had in the pit, I got it set up on blocks next to the salt shed.
How big is that tank, Brett?
That's a 3,000 gallon tank we have there. And then, I didn't know it when I took over Foreman, but I discovered it afterwards, we have in-ground tanks next to our garage. We have a 10,000 gallon in-ground tank, and then we have a 3,000 gallon in-ground tank. That used to be the diesel and the gas. They've been, they were cleaned out, they got cleaned out, and then used to house this very stuff years ago when the town used it, and then they were just abandoned. So all summer long, we've been doing our dust control. I clean those tanks out, mix that sludge in the bottom of the water, and all summer long we've been doing our dust control, getting rid of that old stuff. Fill the tanks, let them sit for a couple of months, make sure they didn't leak. They all held. So my idea is I'm going to start using the big tank again to house some of that. It's non-corrosive, so it shouldn't rot and melt the tank.
You cambered the tank?
We didn't camber it. We filled it with water and measured it every day. It never lost anything.
How long did you have it filled?
Three weeks. And then we've been trucking out of it for the rest of the summer, so spraying it on the roads.
If it was going to leak, you would have known.
Yep.
And this conceivably could save some labor too, because you won't have to reapply as much.
That's the idea. Yep.
Fuel costs.
Fuel will cut down. Anyway, we can cut back on how much we put down, we're going to save money. That's the, what I can't give you a definite number, what we need to do is try it for a whole winter, and then last year we tracked all of our salt usage, tried it for a whole winter, then we'll have the numbers, the data, and we'll know if it works or doesn't. But like I said, other towns are using it, Rollin City's swearing by it, so it's got to do something.
It's a favor, Brett. Joe, you have it?
Yeah, Brent, could you just clarify these two handouts you've provided us with? What's the difference between safe melt and safe bind?
You know, actually, none of the flyers they give depend on what you bought. The product's exactly the same.
Oh.
Exactly the same.
That's my confusion.
Whether to use dust control during the summer or to use it around the road during winter.
What exactly is this, calcium chloride?
No. What's that?
So this is calcium chloride?
It's, it has calcium chloride in it, but no, it's not straight calcium chloride. It's the by, I'm not a scientist, so I apologize, but I read all the data on it. What I know is it's the byproduct of making paper and steel and alcohol.
It's right here, Dick. So it's calcium chloride and magnesium, maybe?
Magnesium chloride.
Okay, any other questions for Brett on it?
Just, Joe, or Bob? Just, yeah, when you put the salt in the back of the truck, you spray this stuff on it, or you spray this stuff?
No, we mix it as we put it in the shed. So everything has to be sitting in the shed by the sand pile, it'll be all pre-mixed, so when we go off for a storm, we'll do load it on the trucks and go.
How do you mix it, Brett?
We spray, got to put a pump in the sprayer on our tanks, and then you spray it on and mix it with the loader.
Okay. When do you spray the water in, or is the water mixed into the 3,000 gallon tank?
Nope, we don't, the water will mix as we're loading out for dust control. We use this for winter time, we don't put no water in it.
You don't put no water in, okay. So when they talk about cutting it with water, that's during the summer?
For the dust, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for Brett?
Just one. How, what exactly are you asking for here? I've got a price of $1.42 a gallon, so you want, how many gallons?
I would like to buy 4,000 gallons of it out of our dust budget, which we, we budget $12,000 for dust control. I'd like to purchase 4,000 gallons of this out of that line on in for dust control, and then I'd like to buy another 4,000 gallons over that of the salt budget, because that's where this going to go in, it's going to mix in the salt.
So if I make a motion for, to authorize the town manager and the highway foreman to buy 8,000 gallons, you'll be happy?
I'll be happy.
I'm ready to do that.
Go ahead.
It's in the budget, so.
In the budget, Brett.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the town manager and highway foreman to buy 8,000 gallons of the product, calcium chloride, light product from Safe Road Services. I don't know what, do you want to call it safe melt, or do you want to call it?
We call it anything you want, safe melt or.
Safe bind.
At a $1.42.
At a price of $1.42 per gallon.
One second. I'll second it. Second, question.
You're, just one more question. You getting the 8,000 gallons all at once?
Um, no. I'll probably get the, the last 4,000 gallons when the salt starts coming. I'll fill that other tank. But when we get the first 4,000 gallons, that'll be, that'll be summer.
Okay, so they'll hold the price?
Oh, yeah.
For you?
This guy, Kevin, seemed, like I said, they dealt with the town for years.
Okay, okay.
We could buy it now and just not have it delivered.
Right.
Okay, yeah. That's, this guy wants a customer back, right?
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
We got one, we can, right here.
Eight, ten.
I haven't done fuel oil yet. No, I don't even have, this is, it's not my.
I have the oil.
Yeah. I haven't done fuel oil.
A little better. You want to borrow this, make your recommendation?
Based on, on the prices that were quoted, it kind of follows suit with the Off-Road Diesel. Make, I'll make a recommendation that we buy our heating oil from Sam's USave at 14 cents margin over rack, estimated quantity of 4,500 gallons for the library, highway garage, and wastewater treatment facilities. And that's only for the, their garage there. They don't use hardly anything. So that's, that's my recommendation.
Can I just say so moved?
Say so moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any second, Mary Lee, discussion? No discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 I'd like to abstain again.
Okay. One abstains.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a letter from Beth Murphy asking to be reappointed to the Community Development and Economic Revitalization Advisory Committee on a CEDRAC. Is it?
She hasn't been, she's never been on the board, so.
This is a new appointment, Jim.
It's not a reappointment, it's just an appointment.
What appointment? Oh, I knew, I, I didn't mean to say re, I'm sorry. Okay, an appointment. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would move that we approve the appointment of Beth Murphy to a two-year term on CEDRAC.
Like, second, Beth?
Can't have everybody two years.
If you look at the chart, you've appointed everybody so far this year for two years. You've got to look at the chart and make sure that.
We don't want to have a chart, Mary.
Well, you guys created the chart, or the, the bylaws, and the bylaws say, we didn't change that. Bylaws say that you've got town residents, two town residents for one year. So we've got to put somebody in a one-year slot. Can't put everybody in a two-year slot, so. So far this year, you've got Ted Molnar, Martha Clifford, me, so, because he's a support board, those are all two years. So we've got Zach and Pete at Katrina. I don't know what they're, I think you'd be better off, you've got it at a one year because you have, they're only at a one year. Let me give you the bylaws, so you can wrap your heads around the chart. And all you did was put it into a chart, it was already written. And these are the bylaws that, last meeting, Joe agrees, help proofread as I corrected them to your recommendations.
Thank you, Mary.
So on page two, you'll see that you should help facilitate these type of discussions. You'd have a chart to work by, rather than have to.
So was the motion for one year or two years?
I made the motion for two years, but if I need to change that, I will revise my motion and make that a one-year appointment.
I'll second it still. Hannah, second. Okay, any other discussion?
Just that one-year appointment will be expiring on June 30th, 2023. Does that sound right, Joe?
Yep.
And, I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting, but, so Beth does run a business, so see, you've got different categories that you have to fill in. Because it's not just set that you put people on the CEDRAC, we have to follow with what was put in the bylaws. So going forward, I mean, you can do, if you did Beth edit as a business, which she is, she's an artist, she runs a business, so I'm just pointing this out so you guys can decide and think maybe you can help guide them. You should understand what we're up against.
Yeah, we, in order to decide whether it should be a one-year or a two-year appointment and which category, we need to have a list of who the members are, and we don't have that with us right now. So I think I'm going to second Joe's motion as it stands, and, or no, you already did that. I did, but it says in here, the business community member shall be a two-year term. I hate to. We don't know what the vacancies are, Bob. Okay, I just heard Mary say this lady is a business.
She, she can be a business, she, it can go either way.
Okay, okay, okay.
Or she's a business.
Okay.
You know, so it can go either way, it can be your decision, and you can help guide that.
What I'm saying is we don't know specifically what vacancies are exist on this document.
Okay.
At this point.
Who else is in the business slots? There's two of them. Zach used to be.
Right. Well, you, well, you had missed, Don.
Well, given the uncertainty, I support the direction that Mr. Combs is taking and would favor that we make this a one-year town, adjoining town resident slot.
So we had a motion, we had a second. Joe's indicated he supports it for one year. Is that okay, folks?
I have one comment. I would ask the town manager or the chair of the SEDRAC to provide us with a accurate list of what each, where the names fit in this list.
When I became chair, I was never given that.
I know, that's why I'm saying we need to at least get a list of who... Perhaps the thing to do is to just take our list of our active members and fill this in at the next SEDRAC meeting. Figure out who's what.
And if we could have that liberty, Beth would be fine, if you could just let us plug her in.
And then if we have to...
We need to have the membership.
And if we have to change the membership or the appointment to a two-year one, it's easy enough to do.
We will report back.
All right, we have a plan.
Are we sure?
I, yeah, we are.
We are sure, Bob?
We are sure.
I don't wanna be here, but...
Okay. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both opposed, motion passes. Moving on. Road name. Alver Lane?
That was my question.
Havoline? Could you pronounce that?
Ahava?
Havoline?
What, how do you pronounce it? Ahava? Ahava? Oh, good, very good, okay.
Does anybody know what that stands for?
Love.
Yes, yes, it means love in Hebrew.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anton.
Perfect.
Is there a motion? We have the information from, I believe, Karen.
Karen.
Why it needs, why it needs a name. Solicit be a private road.
That's correct.
Would it be okay?
Not sure how to word the motion, so I'll take a stab at this. They'll make a motion that we officially name the road off East Hubbardin Road and the area of 444700 and 44472, East Hubbardin Road, to be known as Ahava Lane.
Very good. I'll second it for discussion. Discussion.
What was the name of the road that the numbers are on?
The numbers are currently on East Hubbardin Road. I think I'm getting this right, that it's currently, the addresses are 444, or 4470 and 4472, East Hubbardin Road.
Okay, thank you.
And the addresses will change to whatever the appropriate number on Ahava Lane is, which I do not have handy.
I seconded the motion.
I did. Bob's ball.
Yep.
The numbers...
Discussion. I just, just had a question. Who's buying the sign for the end of the road? Does the town have to buy the sign, Mike, or?
By our new sign, that sign policy? Now, I can't remember. Brent, go, he took off.
We buy the first one.
Just a question I have.
We buy the first... They buy, the town people, or the landowners buy the first one, and then we buy the replacements after that.
I thought it was the other way around.
I thought it's the other way around.
Fifty, I had a fifty-fifty shot at it.
It's the other way around, I can remember that.
So we're buying the first one, and then if they get stolen, they're...
Whatever, we'll follow the sign policy.
Any other questions on this?
The new addresses will be 83 and 132, Ahava Lane.
If not, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
A, V, I.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ahava Lane. Okay, we'll move on. Set the municipal tax rate.
Our bylaws next.
SEDRAC bylaws are next, Jim.
Well, we took it off because I didn't have anything before the meeting, Mary. Were you...
Joe told me, Joe told me to bring the copy.
Karen did, she didn't have nothing to put in the packet, so I, we scratched it. But if you guys wanna add it back on, you can.
Haven't had a chance to, haven't had a chance to read. Just got it.
This is what I have.
Do you say something about...
That's what I have.
That's what I got.
The warning of the bylaw changes, Mike?
No, that, we, it was on the list, but we didn't care, didn't have anything to put in the packet to, so you could review it before the meeting. And typically, the board doesn't like to do something if they don't have it before the meeting, typically.
I guess the one thing that I would say is that we gave this a relatively thorough consideration at the last meeting. And Mary worked with me to make the changes that I advised and that I think the board recommended. And so those are reflected in the draft that she brought tonight. I think it would not take long for the board to look, simply for the changes. But I don't wanna press that point of view if others would rather have the more time to review the bylaw proposal.
What's your, what's your pleasure, folks, on acting on it tonight, or?
I'd like to put it off, I'd like it tabled, so that we can read it. Have you got a new mission statement, too?
We did not. Joe, Joe and I agree, along with our other members, that the mission statement we were given never made sense. And so since we started from scratch, we're gonna work with the, we can give you quite a lot of time. And then a mission statement should just be a sentence, maybe a paragraph, perhaps. And then we'll put that to both, rather than another four-page document that pretty much mirrors the bylaws.
So you're scratching this, the mission state?
Yes.
Well, the other thing I'd like to say about this, Jim, is that was just pointed out to me, and it's a good point, there are no page numbers on this document.
On the bylaws?
Yes. It's easy fix, but...
Well, have all the paragraphs there.
Bylaws, and she's proposing.
No, you know when she proposes it.
This one I hear.
Okay, there seems to be some concern about waiting till the next meeting to handle this. So what's your pleasure, folks?
I'm not opposed to wait.
You're not opposed to waiting?
Make a motion, we table it for the next meeting.
You just did.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion. Now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Now we'll try to set the tax rate. We have information from the town accountant as to the tax rate. We need a motion to set the municipal tax rate at 0.4840. That's one motion.
Actually, we could do this all in one motion, if I recall correctly. I'm gonna make a motion to set the municipal tax rate at 0.484 dollars and, and the local tax agreement rate to 0.0055 dollars for a total municipal tax rate of 0.4895 dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion?
Can you just say that last number again?
0.4895 dollars.
Thank you.
Discussion. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both opposed, motion passes. Next motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the education tax rate for fiscal year 2223 at the homestead rate of 1.4065 dollars and the non-homestead rate at 1.6190 dollars.
I'll also second that. And a second. Motion to accept. Do we have any choice?
Not really.
No, of course not. Education. Okay, discussion on this one. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next motion.
A motion to, I, make a motion to set the low, the low penalty tax rate for filing for homestead declaration at 3% and set the high penalty for late filing of homestead declaration at 3% for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023.
I'll second that, too. Discussion. That's the same as this year. It's the same.
Yeah, there's no change.
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both opposed, motion passes. And for your information, the combined tax rate for FY 22, is that you, Allison?
Chair. I think it's here, please.
No, okay.
I think it's Joe's chair.
The combined tax rate for FY 2223 will be resident, 1.8960, which is a decrease of 0, 0.0520 from FY 2122. Non-resident, 2.1085, a decrease of 0.0254 fiscal, from fiscal 2122. I believe that's due to a decrease in the educational tax rate.
And our, our grant list went up, too.
The what?
The grant list went up a little bit, too.
Grant list went up a little bit, right? And why is there a decrease in the educational tax rate? Since there was no decrease in the budget.
The legislature, legislative body at the state level gave some relief back to the municipalities.
Meaning the $90 million surplus they had.
Right.
So this is a one-year windfall. Okay. All righty, anything else on that? Employee appreciation. Michael, we had something to rule on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So based on what the board asked last month about putting a dollar figure to that, I, in my proposal, I broke that down into two, two parts, Proposal A and Proposal B. And I attached dollar figures to each of those. Proposal A was for full-time employees, permanent, part-time employees, fire department volunteers, and castle and first response. I put the dollar amounts there for the total of 34,500. And if you choose to do appreciation awards to boards, commissions, and committees, I recommended Proposal B. Dollar figures are there for a total of $5,600 for a grand, a grand total between the two of $40,100. And I gave a breakdown of names of personnel on the particular boards, committees, commissions, full-time, part-time, all that. So you have a by-name list.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from the Part A of this discussion.
Okay, it's all noted. Where would the money come from, Mike?
Well, it was originally talked in paragraph three about the board to consider using budget surpluses or American Recovery Act, ARPA money to pay for that one-time cost.
Do we have a surplus?
No.
No.
Well, we, after you commit, the commitment of the resolution would take, would take this out of the mix. So the only other option that I can see would be use of the American Recovery Act plan money.
Thank you. What's the board's pleasure?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, it's open to the amounts I put in there. If the board so chooses to do something with those amounts, this was just my recommendation.
I'm gonna ask to have my name removed from the select board. Is that gonna be over?
Mine, too.
Can that be done?
Sure.
Okay.
Joe?
Well, I was going to make a more general point, and I think I said something like this last meeting. I, I am strongly supportive of the Part A proposal and would probably be interested in elevating the three individuals on Part B, namely the first constable, the tree warden, and the animal control officer to the Part A group. I, as I said at last meeting, I don't feel like the pandemic put any great additional stress on me as a select board member, except having to do a lot more Zoom meetings than I ever knew existed. And, and I, I can't make that, I can't speak for anyone else on this list, but I think members of the planning commission, the development and review board, et cetera, et cetera. None of our, our boards and commissions have had citizen-facing responsibilities. But that is true for first response, full-time employees, even the animal control officer. So that, that is the way that I would personally approach dividing these two categories, if we have the money to do it.
Well, I think he said we'd have to use ARPA money?
Yeah, and you're, when you guys decide...
You know, Mike, at this time?
Yeah, I would say that's the only recommendation that I can make at this point. And when you, when you got, when the board finally gets to that point where you're gonna make recommendations for use of ARPA, if you so choose to consider it at that point, that's, that's the only way that I could recommend to fund it at this point.
And, Mr. Chairman, as I recall, when the ARPA money was first announced and the Department of Treasury offered its initial guidelines for how that money could be used, this was very much on the list of options. Subsequently, they kind of lifted all the restrictions for those communities that are getting 10 million or less and basically said you can use it any way you want. But I do think it makes sense to consider using a modest amount of the ARPA money for this purpose.
Would you be willing, Joe, to move, take a motion to move the first constable, tree warden, and the animal control officer up to Part A?
I'd be happy to make that motion. So moved.
I'll second that. Got you, Mike, Bob, okay.
Any change to the amounts, or just as, as is?
I would go with what you've recommended here.
All those in favor?
I guess we don't have a motion...
That's why I wondered.
A general motion...
Yeah.
To endorse any of this.
Let's vote on moving those up to...
Yeah, that's what I wondered, if you wanted to vote on moving those up. Okay, all those in favor of moving those three positions up indicate by saying aye.
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 Both opposed?
Aye, that I can vote on.
Okay. All right. Next. As far as this is concerned.
I would move that we approve the employee compensation plan that the manager has proposed regarding the Part A grouping of employees and appointed individuals.
I would second that.
And what are you, what are you, you're talking about in terms of funding?
And that, uh...
Are you talking ARPA?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Everybody understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Reminder, I've recused myself.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on what we approved last time? Do I have to wait until select board? We approved the Crystal Beach passes and also the trash.
All of them, yeah.
I, I'd like to, I assumed when we did this, and I'm the one that did it, made the motion for the Crystal Beach passes to be given out. I assumed it was coming out of a personnel budget. If you take those passes, say, say 10 people take it, at 15 apiece, that's 150 that you're taking away from the recreation department because they aren't getting that $150. So I think anything like that should be taken out of a personnel budget, not taking it away from the recreation department.
So what's your recommendation? To take $150 out of the ARPA and put it back?
Well, I'm not saying 150, I'm saying...
Well, whatever the number of people are.
Yeah, whatever number shows up...
Okay.
Is taken out of personnel and put into, put into the recreation department. Because that's what they would have gotten if they sold the passes. You're all looking at me like I got four eyes. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I absolutely understand.
Mr. Chairman, I talked to Melanie, the accountant, today about it. And, 'cause that way we have, we have the revenue and the expenditures balancing out. So I, I understand what you're saying, is, you know, the semantics will, will, we can talk to Melanie about it, but we can make it cost-neutral.
it, but we, we can make it cost neutral, that the rec's not losing revenue stream by giving the passes away.
Why aren't they?
So they're not losing it.
Oh, you're, okay.
You're going to find the money someplace to put it in the.
Yeah, whether it's, I mean, whether it's coming out of the, of, like, there's five people in the, in the highway department's budget or in the highway department, we, we have to find money in the highway to move, to offset it, you know, and it's, it's, I don't, not getting into semantics, I'll leave that to Melanie, but there, there was another concern, Mr. Chairman, on that, on that motion that you made last month about the permits for the transfer station. The, the ordinance says that trash has to be generated in the town of Hubbardton and the town of Castleton. If, if this is the case, we, not all of our employees live in the town Hubbard or Castleton, so we'd have to make, have the board make an amendment to the ordinance to allow for those, those employees that are receiving this. I can craft the, the language up for a future digesting of it, but if you don't, you're kind of violating the ordinance.
I'm going to make a comment for that. I feel that's a little, and not on your part, Mike, I understand what you're saying, but I think that's being a little picky. We, we, just let me finish.
Yep, yep.
We have a few commercial haulers, not a few, we have two or three commercial haulers that we know pick up trash outside of the borders. They only pick up five, six, seven, eight customers outside the borders. We don't throw a fit about that, so adding two or three employees, I don't think we need to go changing the bylaws or making a motion to.
I, I appreciate your comments.
I just, I just think you're getting a little carried away.
No, I, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of, does it open you up where someone says, well, you did it for them, can you, so that's, that's always.
I don't think we're going to have that. I don't think we're going to have that. I just, I think you're stretching it a little bit, so, and not just you.
No, but I hope it is. I hope you guys, the board agrees that we don't need to do that.
This little bit of thing we're doing for our employees, I think is fantastic, and we just, let's not make it a bigger issue than what it needs to be.
I'd be okay with that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this? Joe, you're getting ready to say something.
That's getting pretty picky.
I'm set.
You're set? Okay. All right. Anything else on this? Do we have a motion on this?
We don't need a motion.
Don't need one, that sounds good to me. Okay.
So we took care of proposal Part A.
Yes.
Are we not doing anything with B?
Whatever you want to do.
It's my inclination.
I can participate in this discussion, and I think we should do not, take no action.
Thank you. That's kind of what I agree with too.
What was that, Dick? I'm sorry.
I think that since we moved the three people that had person-to-person contact during the pandemic up to Part A, that the people in Part B were very low-risk and always had the option of zooming, so I think that we should just not take any action on Part B.
Except, for me, it raises the question, do we adequately express our gratitude to these people? And I'm not sure we do. So, and I think, at the very least, a letter from the select board to each member of these various boards and commissions would be called for.
Is that a motion?
Can you take care of that, Mike?
I, I would ask that the select board draft, draft it, and I'll take care of getting it on letterhead, so it's your words of what you want to say. Would you take that challenge on?
It's daunting challenge, but yes.
Thank you.
I think it's within your skill. That resolves that. Okay, anything else on this? If not, we will move on.
I just want to thank Mike for all of your work on this. I know this wasn't.
Thank you.
I think it's the right thing to do, but.
Okay. ARPA funding obligation by the select board. Board members?
I'd, I'd like to start by making a motion that we grant a hundred thousand dollars to the library so they can complete their projects and their repairs that need to be made, as they showed us last month or two weeks ago. They've put a lot of money, got a lot of grants, they've worked very hard to do this, and I think it's a benefit to the whole town.
If there's a second.
I'll second that.
There's a discussion. Seeing now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes care of that part. Next one.
Do we need a motion to authorize the town manager to use ARPA money for.
Yes.
Payment of the proposal on Part A of his employee appreciation?
If you didn't do it, I don't, I don't recall if you did it or not, if you didn't, yeah, you'd have to.
We didn't actually do that, did we, Joe?
We did not.
So I'm going to recuse myself for that.
The chair asked me if that was my intention, and I said it was, but I don't know that that got reflected formally in the motion. So I.
We recorded it as four, four zero, Dick abstained, for approval of Part A grouping using ARPA funding, four zero, Dick abstained, is what I.
All right. Then just want to make sure we get it right.
Well, Part A, I'd have to add, just quick to add.
Add the last three?
Yeah.
Just get a dollar figure down.
Five hundred. So thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-five thousand?
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to that, to cover Part A of?
Go ahead, somebody make a motion.
No, you added wrong.
Did I?
It's five hun, three, three, four, five, it'd be thirty-nine, five.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, 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 these are, this is hundreds, this is hundreds, not, not thousands.
No.
Thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
Thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
Okay.
No, 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 hold on.
That can't be.
That can't be right. It was five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five thousand.
Two. Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
You had it right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's my adding that's bad.
It's all right.
Okay, are we all set on that? All righty, anything else on ARPA funds? Joe?
I, I, I think there was some support in our last meeting for committing to the sewer expansion to Depot Terrace. And I just want to put that on the table and see how my colleagues feel about that. This was one of those ideas that seemed to have some urgency to it, I think that would put us where, is this a valid estimate, Mike, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That was from our engineer, but it was an off-the-cuff, you know, he, that was his, his words, or his presentation to me. So it is, all those were kind of rough guesses.
Well, I would be interested in, in having the engineer refine that estimate so that we could consider it at a future meeting.
Which?
I would agree with that.
This is the sewer expansion, List A, it's the fourth item down, presently identified as a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, but apparently that's a soft estimate.
For what area?
This is Depot Terrace.
So that's the road going down to and including Brown's Auto Salvage.
And it, I guess, in my view, that's partly related to the point of view I expressed last time, which is that we should worry as much about business retention as business, new business recruitment.
This, go ahead, you go first.
I just got one question. Where did, and I apologize, I missed the last meeting, and when you guys talked about this, where, where did we end up with the salt and sand shed?
Mike?
We have two hundred thousand dollars in our coffers right now, so we have to pay twenty percent, so based upon the estimates that we have, we would have enough right now to pay our twenty percent of that.
So we don't have to worry about ARPA money?
Anything else on this?
Just a question, and this, I'm not an engineer, but how far down School Street does the sewer go now? And would it make more sense to go under the railroad there rather than on Blissville Road? I'm just thinking out loud. So kick, you know, throw that out at the engineer.
I will, I, I think I talked to Matt about that a while ago because it's a shorter distance, maybe, but we'd have to still run it back down if there's nobody on that road, or if anybody else on that road doesn't have it.
Right, right. And that was, you know, doing my rough calculations, I also got very similar dollar figure for the cost of expanding it down to Depot Terrace, and the engineer that I talked to brought up School Street as well, but if it's just sewer, since the sewer's already on our side of the railroad tracks, it would be more efficient just to send it straight down to Depot Terrace, because dealing with the railroad tracks for the railroad company can be, you know, cop gas.
Joe?
And before, in the last meeting, we had talked about the sewer not being south of the railroad tracks, but there's a manhole just south of the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
And there's a manhole at Mystic Heathermore also, so.
Well, I knew sewer was there, but water wasn't there.
Right, right.
Correct, water is not.
But sewer's already in the tracks.
Right.
So that would be no digging the tracks or the railroad issue.
And did we hear somewhere that Brown's Salvage was interested in the contribution to this project?
We would definitely make a contribution, you know, right now.
Do you have a number or a percentage?
So how does the ARPA funding work? Do you say you have to pay twenty percent of it, or?
I heard twenty-five.
Project, wait, a project, we pay, a grant project, we pay twenty percent of the grant.
You know, I, I don't know what percentage it would be, but, you know, because I don't have the actual figure on what the total estimate would be, but we'd be totally open for a discussion of, you know, thirty percent or something like that.
You say thirty percent, Matt?
I mean, I'm just kind of going off the cuff, but yes, is what I said.
Yes, Joe?
Another comment on that.
Sure.
We did help out with the paving, paving of Depot Terrace, I do believe that a lot of the, a lot of the streets now have gotten a hundred percent, but we did offer substantial now, and I think that the, what was on the board was two hundred and fifty, and I think then we would be, I think, also willing to help out beyond that, but of course, I think that's a hundred percent.
For be, paving?
No, no, we already, we paid for, I think, half of that paving when we did that paving.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
We did make a substantial donation to that, to the town for that, and it benefited us, so it's not, you know, that's not a question, but I think we'd have to see what the cost of it would be, I guess, after the two hundred and fifty, or what we can negotiate or something, but I think we're very fair and willing to participate in keeping those employees there.
Okay, anything else on this?
Just say, I look forward to working with you when it's time. Let's, you know, hopefully we make it happen.
Be great.
Anything else on ARPA? Yes, Bob?
Can I ask a question on?
Sure.
Whether or not the town has considered Creek Road as part of sewer extension as well?
They have.
Do you have a budget figure for that?
It's unknown.
Unknown?
Well, I'm, I'm still waiting for it, sir, from the engineer.
Okay. I know that our side of it, Marine side of it, would like very much to see that fill up, Creek Road. Don't know what contribution we would make, we certainly would make a contribution if it comes to that.
It's open for discussion?
It's open for discussion.
Okay. Just one comment, historically in Castleton, since the original sewer line, lines were put in and the plant was constructed nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two, any sewer extensions have been paid for by the users. Now, yes, we do have some money here this time, but we can, we can use it up pretty fast, one point three million, of which we've received fifty percent, and it doesn't take that long with today's prices to use that up. So anyone who's interested in that type of thing might want to consider what you folks have possibly proposed.
Mr. Chairman, Kerry Fowler's on Zoom. He didn't raise his hand, but I'm not sure if he, if he's listening or not.
He's muted.
Yeah.
He's also watching on sewer. Okay, anything else on ARPA funds from the folks who are here, then we'll, we'll go right to Kerry. Nothing else? No? Go ahead, Nancy.
I just wanted to thank the select board and your, you know, endorsement of the work that we're doing at the library, and we will keep up the good work, I promise.
And you folks do the same, which you have been doing in the past.
Keeping up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Nancy.
All right. Anyone else on Zoom on ARPA funds?
Kerry's unmuted. Kerry, do you want to address the select board?
Yeah, I would like to. I know I saw the, the list that you had, that there was a possible listing of, you know, some money towards the water line replacement from the reservoir to the east end of town. I don't know if that was anything that was still being considered.
I believe at the last meeting, it was stated that the fire district was working with their engineer to secure funding or partial funding for that project, and there is substantial money available that the fire district could apply for. To help you with your.
Yeah, we have, we have applied for it, we've applied to the state for the funding, but the, the office that handling their funding was empty for four months, and so we're, you know, we're just kind of sitting back, struggling to try to get something going by the end of the year, or we have to turn around and redo an awful lot of paperwork and whatnot, so, so our funding is still in question because of the holdup from the state on their end, so.
Okay.
Guess we'll, we'll sit, we'll sit tight, I guess.
Okay, any questions for Kerry, or Kerry from the board? No? I guess not, Kerry.
Well, I just, I wanted to ask him. Kerry, what kind of money are we talking to? Do you have any idea?
Well, we started out, two years ago, talking about, we were looking at six hundred thousand. Well, with the ledge that we ran into and, and of course inflation, we're up to one point two million. We had, have seven hundred thousand put away for this project, so, you know, we've got a, we've got a good piece set aside for it, but we knew that we were going to hit ledge up there, we just didn't know how much till we did the test work.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Kerry? Thank you very much, Kerry, we appreciate your comment.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else on Zoom for ARPA?
Anybody on Zoom want to unmute and address the board about ARPA?
Ain't none?
No.
Ain't none. Okay, then we shall move on. Let me get this straightened out here. Here we go. Managers report. Any questions for Mike? You knew you.
Nice try, Jim.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I got questions.
You got a question, Bob? Okay.
Well, just a little clarification on the dispatching, Mike. You got a figure of two million dollars. Now that's, I assume that's for the whole county?
Yeah, well, you missed that part, I'm sorry, you missed that part of the meeting, Bob. Chief Mantello talked about that.
Okay.
It was two to three million and is for the county.
Oh, okay. Just the way it's worded in here, it sounds like somehow you're saying two million dollars for the town of Castle.
ARPA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to fill you in, Bob, we're, his educated guess at this point is our, it could potentially cost the town a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is significantly more than we spend now. Less than we spend now, Mike. I don't remember off the top of my head. It's not, it's, it's less than ten thousand, I believe. Does that sound right?
It's in that neighborhood, I'm not sure if it's less, though.
Okay, well.
Any other questions for Mike?
I had some.
Anything else?
I have.
Action items you need, Mike?
The only question is, where do we stand on getting a grant writer for the assistance of firefighters grant? You gotten any bites yet?
I, I have a meeting with Fire Grant Act or whatever, I put it, I put it in there to meet with them about needs, so I, so I do, I did get a bite on one of those companies that do grant writing, so once I meet with them, I'll update the board on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, somebody's chair squeaked when Dick asked if those, the grant writer was for what?
For the assistance to firefighters grant.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mike? I just want to ask about the, the transfer station thing, Mike, it says, look at costs to bring it to Gleason Road. Two or three years ago, Tim Gilbert was in here and was saying Gleason Road was a hundred and forty-seven dollars a ton. I believe we pay, and it may have gone up, but it was less than half of that, we took it to the. We took it to New York State.
Yeah, it was... I thought their last number I was up was 112.50 a ton. I got to verify that number for you.
That's what they've gone up down to New York State?
No, no, in Rutland.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a different figure than he gave us.
And then down in New York, they went up on their prices to basically $80 a ton.
Okay.
And as the fuel prices have gone up to haul and those prices for the per-ton rate down at... In Gansport and Hudson... Or Hudson Falls, I want to just... I just want to tear it apart and present something back to the board to let you know either we're doing well or we're not doing well.
Okay.
The question for Tim is, is that 112.50 or whatever his rate is that gives you, does that include the district surcharge or do they tack that onto top of that? That would be...
I mean, we wouldn't be paying the district surcharge. So he told me 100... They just raised it a certain... I forgot what it was, but 50 cents was included in that amount. So that's why I believe it was 112.50, but I'll verify that.
Yeah, just includes the district surcharge or not?
If we're not taking it out of the state, I don't know how to...
You still pay the district surcharge.
But I'll get the total number for you.
Anything else for Mike?
I just want to say I appreciated the lengthy discussion of the fire trucks that you provided. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else?
On that same subject... On that same subject, I want to... I did want to bring that up, what Joe said. It says in here, "Recommend not doing anything with engine six." But it also says that our mechanic said it's structurally sound. No, that wasn't it. Automotively sound.
Engine transmission, you know, minus the taking the pump out of it and that kind of stuff.
Can we... Can we work towards getting that fixed since it's been sitting in there for six months or better? And it's out of use. If we're not going to replace that, can we get that up and running and get it fixed?
God, it's... This has been a huge discussion amongst many folks inside and outside the fire department that people know about it. What I've asked Chief Goyette for is... He got a quote via text. The company in Granville that... The... Needs it down there to really assess it. That's what I've been recommending we do is bring it down to New York, have a real honest-to-God assessment to see what it's going to cost to fix it. And then when the fire department comes back with their vehicle replacement plan, let's see how this all fits into this... This cost. Is it's... There's a truck out of service. It's the... It's an engine.
Could I jump in on this? Because I think we're talking about two different trucks. You brought up Truck Six.
Two.
And you're talking about Two.
Originally Two, you know, Engine Six is the mini pumper.
That's the one that they wanted to replace originally. And now you've talked them out of keeping that, but it's not fixed. It's just sitting idle in the bay.
That's Two.
There's two separate animals here, Bob. Engine Six is the mini pumper they requested to replace last fall, and we...
And you're still using it.
That's serviceable.
And that's still in service and still runs fine.
Okay, I read that wrong here.
And then Engine Two is the 99... 98, 99 International.
That's...
That's got some frame issues.
That's just sitting there and can't be used.
Okay. Okay. That was a chief's choice.
Okay, I read... I read this wrong.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions for Mike?
While we're on this subject, we're going to be meeting with the public safety board or public safety committee is going to be meeting with the fire department officers tomorrow.
I don't think so.
That's off?
I was waiting for Heath to come in and visit me tonight, and they're not ready.
They're not ready?
Because he's... He's without with his injury and another one was out with a surgery, so they haven't got everything pulled together, so they're not really ready to meet tomorrow. But Heath was going to confirm that with me after he talked to his members, and I don't have that unless he sends me in the last hour or so. We're not going to have anything ready for tomorrow. Can we look at something two weeks out?
All right. Well, that doesn't change where I'm going with this. We're going to be meeting with the fire department officers in the near future instead of tomorrow. I personally am not comfortable with only having one engine in town in service, particularly when that engine goes up... It's taken out of service and goes up to the town garage for work, and we have no pumper in town. I'm not comfortable with that at all, and I want to be on record as saying that. I am... I want to find some way to compel the chief to send that truck down to Granville to get it actually scrutinized and analyzed to see if it can be repaired and if so, at what cost.
Make a motion.
Engine Two.
Make a motion.
So is there... Is there some way we can compel the chief to do that?
Of course you can. You make a motion.
I could just direct him to do it.
Then I'll make a motion. We direct the town manager to direct the chief to get Engine Two to Granville to get an estimate on repairing it and getting it back in service.
Is there a second? A second, Bob? Now, a second discussion.
Could we give it a timeframe?
Yeah. Sure.
We gotta... I gotta make sure... We gotta find out when they'll accept it in there, but at the earliest opportunity.
At the earliest opportunity.
How about we direct the town manager to have the chief get an appointment set up within two weeks?
Why does it take two weeks to set up an appointment?
Two days.
I'm trying to be reasonable.
Two days.
One week.
Okay, that's better than two. Okay, that's a motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Anything else for Mike? If not, we will move on.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify a couple things for you?
Sure, Mike. Yep.
Just an update. On page one, the TAP grant for Parsons Hills, I tried emailing that to the board today, but it was 28 megabyte file, so I got rejected some for some of them. But we got the drawings now, so that's now going to move into the permitting process with V-Trans for the easements and the driveway access. So that's good. That's what we've been waiting on. It's still probably a spring of 23 project, though. But at least it's been... We've got the plans back now.
Okay. Anything else? Thought you said a couple.
And scope... Well, the Stasi Road stormwater scoping study that was scratched for this week is on the 8th of August agenda. So they can brief that one on. Just making sure that there was nothing I had to update since I wrote this. Folks, if you noticed that the crosswalks and stuff have been painted in the village, that we borrowed the machine, so we have... We have the paint now, and they're going to continue to catch up on all the stop bars and stop signs, the stop... The word "stop." They actually did the one at the university as well, so... But that was a great find to be able to utilize the material or the machine from V-Trans. But I... That's a kudos to Brent for going out and finding that. Borrowing your questions, that's it.
Okay. I guess we've asked our questions. Thank you, Mike. Okay, moving on. Purchase order for approval. I don't see any purchase orders.
Didn't see any.
Moving on to the warrants for approval.
I got one.
Oh.
Isn't that a purchase order?
No. No, that was a quote. That's a quote.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, moving on to the warrants.
Make a motion. We approve warrant number 0725R for $650. Warrant number 0725 for $65,736.93. Warrant 0721 for $28,144. Warrant 0714 for $7,961.2. Warrant 0721P for $20,691.32. And warrant 0714P for $20,887.95.
Is there a second?
Second?
Now, a second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Kerry, go, Bob. I think we have a couple others here, too.
I'd make a motion that we approve warrant number 0722P for $658.35 and number 0715P for $654.67.
I'll second that. And second. Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
I recuse myself.
Are those two in here? Those two, those last two are in here?
Yeah.
They're there in here.
We're in sure authorization, that's all. You got the squeaky chair this time.
He fixed that handle. Is that loose in?
Nope.
It's fine.
They were really...
The left one is a little loose, but...
Yeah, we gotta get that finished out.
I used to take a can of Teflon, either white lithium or Teflon, and give those to God.
Should have bring in WD-40, I don't... Since I don't have Teflon.
Lithium and Teflon, and they both have... They work wonders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir. I'm working on the budget.
How many are we looking for? There's six. And there's two. I know you're a soldier, but if you can count eight, can't you?
Next item, select board comments and/or concerns.
I do.
All right.
I want to thank Mike and Allison for the improvement in the timeliness of minutes. It looks... They've done a good job. And my other concern is, do we have four members or five members now presently on the DRB board? Because two left, and you only put one on.
Not only the day, it was Pat, Dan, Don Wood, Laura, and Mike Holden.
Okay.
Other... Any other select board comments or concerns? Bob, you all set?
We're all set.
You all set? Joe?
I have none.
I have none. Who do I? Okay. Any reason for a brief recap and items for follow-up? Or have we beat things to death pretty well tonight?
I think Mike knows what we've tabled.
I've got notes on it, and Allison's got it, too.
I believe this is select board comments and concerns. There, I'm sorry.
Actually, I do have one more question, and I guess it's for our parliamentarian. The meeting that was joint with Hubbardton, do we approve the minutes separately or do we have to all get together to approve them?
It's beyond my pay grade. I've never had to consider that kind of question. I think a joint meeting is advisable, period. I think we have some questions before us that necessitate that we meet together, in which case I think we should approve them together.
Okay. That's the word from the parliamentarian.
The minutes that we agreed to table earlier in the meeting. No, those are ARPA.
No, those are not. Those are ARPA.
You're right. You're correct.
Okay. Any other select board comments or concerns? Seeing none. Well, these are brief recaps. Okay. All right. So we're ready for an executive session? Real estate?
Make a motion. We go into executive session for real estate with the board, the town manager, the town attorney, and do we want the clients here, too?
I believe Ted... Ted? With the clients? Executive session? Everybody?
Attorney Dusil's here, and the applicant. I think there was an application filed with you, and her sobrini is here, represented by...
And her attorney. Yep, so...
I'm ready to go wherever you are.
All right. So let me start over. I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session with the board, the town manager, the town attorney, her sobrini, and her attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion?
And what about Jay?
And Jay... Jay Brannick as well. At 9:06 PM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those close, we're in executive session.